Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. A notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 5105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on April 22nd, 2020 at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on April 17th, 2020 at 1:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 5510415510, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. All members are present, either present in the boardroom or present with Zoom. I hope everyone is doing well and their safety and family and everyone is good during these challenging new times we're enduring. So I hope everyone's safe. If I may please ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Yeah, Heavenly Father, please bless us this day and let us conduct business in your name. And let us continue to stay healthy and continue to hear your words of wisdom. In the say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Moving on to item three is invitation to the audience for public comments. That includes staff, board, anyone. I have Victor that wanted to ask ahead to make a statement or comment or something, please.
Well, first of all, Happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day.
Yes, we posted on Facebook some information about Earth Day today. And about water conservation, of course, the vain part that we're interested in.
I'd like to also wish Daisy happy administrative professional day. Thank you for all you do, Daisy. We really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And last but not least, we had a great meeting yesterday. I had a great meeting with Carlos Galván. I cannot believe it's been six months since Grant Access started its services with the Water District. We were very pleased with the discussion that we had. We have some things we need to improve and we're already on it. So thank you so much for allowing us to serve the Water District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victor.
Anyone else? Staff, board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to thank Grant Access Alicia for that letter that you did last week concerning the problems that we're having with our sewer lines and so on. What I did with that letter, I gave it to the new pretreatment manager. And he looked at it and what we're doing is we went through Google and translated it to Spanish. And I've been talking to Mr. Galván. What we're going to do is send it out to our customers on a one-shot mail instead of waiting for, to send it out with the bills because that would take too long to send it out. And just give them notice. And this concerning the problems that we're having with the white piece and the sewer lines. And that letter that you all did was really good. We thank you for it.
And the title, title to it?
Don't flush wipers down the pipes.
Wipes down the pipes.
It's the same as what's the other one.
Victor has a good title there. Thank you.
Fogs, fats, oils, and greases.
Right. And that's what Frankie did with the, with the letter, kind of mention all that.
Are we moving along? Is anyone else last closing?
You ought to include a picture. There's some good pictures of when they clean out.
Stop the picture.
And just put it in a, put it in letters. People see it.
On our next meeting, the new pretreatment manager and his crew have really been cleaning out the gas stations. And I want to bring, I want to send some pictures that y'all can see how clean they look after he's gone through them.
At the next meeting.
Right.
Okay, closing, moving along to item four. Consider and discuss for possible approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from April 8th, 2020. Board, everyone had a chance to review them. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval by Mr. Houston. Was that a second by Mr. Dr. Lallan?
It sure was.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All in favor?
Alright.
There are any opposed, none? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item five, General Managers Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I just wanted to bring up an update on COVID-19. Anybody else commenting? I thought I heard something else. The updates that I'll be bringing up is on the COVID-19. Hopefully that something can get done sooner or later and better sooner than later. But right now, my HR, Mary, has updated our, our letter for the employees that traveled back and forth to work. It's updated again because it was to the 30th of April, but now it's up to May the 4th. So it's, as much as county changes, we'll be changing these letters also for the employees to go back, essential employees that work. So if they get stopped by the police, they have something to respond back to them, that they're essential workers. And it's a good letter for them to have. The other one. Is the letter that I attached there was sent by Mary Houston up from Laguna Vista. And I know that we have a lot of employees that live there. And it was a very positive letter of, you know, providing support for each other. And I have it in there so y'all can see it. But I liked it so much that I said, I gotta let the board know that. Very positive information. And this for, for all of us to keep fighting together for the next couple of weeks. And we'll get through it and fight that virus. So I liked it. So this is pretty nice. So as long as the county is changing the shelter in place, we'll be bringing updates until then, until it's over. So the other information that I have here on the scheduled possible workshop is that I wanted to talk about it now before, because the medias are coming up so quick that I need to get ahead and provide information to the board. So the workshop that we've been talking about is to bring the revenue and all the expenditures back to the board from the month of April. As of now, the month of March, we didn't see any changes or lowered revenue. But as today, we're seeing lower consumptions on the daily basis. So that means that less water is being provided. So the full report is actually going to be completed by the second meeting in May. So that's, Mr. Salazar had mentioned to me that all the expenditures that come in and reports by the 20th more or less are completed, May the 20th from April, that's what I'm talking about. All the reports and expenditures, bills that come in like kind of late. So by the 27th, we'll have information available back to the board where we can have a workshop on the 27th. And you want to have it on the 13th because we don't have enough information.
Can't we just do that as a regular agenda item? I can't make it needing a full workshop. I mean, we know what the, we know what it's going to say.
We probably can. We can do it.
Just do it at 5:00, you know.
Meet at 5:00 PM, maybe 30 minutes before.
I think it'd be sufficient.
What I'm saying is I don't think we need a workshop, just put it as an agenda.
Okay, but it, okay, we're gonna do that as an agenda item. It'll just take a little longer. But it'll be for the 27th and all the information that will be compiling on the revenues, expenditures. And then I'll be also talking about maybe another agenda item. I'll get with Brian on this one for the helping assisting our customers in some way. But we'll see what happens when I bring it up. See what the board wants to decide on that one. But we'll do it as an agenda item too. Okay?
Well, let's start with what P U B recommends. And P U B kind of gives us the guidance. My thought would be.
The reason.
P U C, I'm sorry, P U C.
Oh, P U C, yes.
P U C kind of gives us the top guidance and goes down from there and what our abilities are in-house, what we can do. But let's start from what P U C has put out there. Go forward, in my opinion.
Yes, I understand. And we've been looking at the P U C and that's where we got the information also.
This is in regards to establishing some kind of program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The last time we met, there was a discussion about this. And I think Jason is the one who mentioned something about doing a workshop. I just thought I'd throw that in.
We're not cutting any water off. We're not charging any interest. So I mean, and that's, that's our policy right now.
Right now.
Yeah, the only thing I was concerned about, because I did talk to Carlos about this earlier, about conducting this workshop and how it would work or what kind of information is really needed for us to be able to put together something like that. And, and yes, having all the cycles in by the end of next month would be a good time to, to look at that, to see. Because I'm not sure what kind of revenue we're looking at in 30 days from now. And developing a program that's going to assist people might not just come from us.
It will come from others as well. By what we need also. Let's not create a program for needs. Let's see what our needs are first also.
Right. And that, and once we have all the cycles in by second meeting of next month, well, I think we'll have a better idea.
Yes, it's my call.
Okay, so then we'll do it that way. Have a regular board meeting with agendas. Yes, that was it on that one. Do you want to keep moving then?
Yes, okay. Thank you, Carlos. Let's move along to item six. Discuss and approve resolution expressing official intent to reimburse engineering costs related to imposing, renovating, and equipping water treatment plant one from tactics and obligations to be issued by the Laguna Mottery Water Circuit, other matters related there on two, Resolution 179042020.
And this is a resolution that was provided by our bond council that would reimburse us up to $200,000. And the board just needs to approve this. I'm open to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Avalos?
Second.
Second by Mr. Starkey. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All are in favor? There was?
Yes, there's, there is a question on how many As and how many Noes?
Was there a negative?
No, all five.
Okay, the motion passes.
Oh, we need a roll call vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, excuse me.
We need a roll call vote. I misunderstood.
Mr. Avalos is in favor. Mr. Starkey was in favor. Mr. Dr. Lallan?
Aye, favored.
Dr. Lallan in favor. Mr. Houston in favor. All are in favor.
Thank you. That's all we needed. Let me take the signatures out after the meeting.
Moving along to item seven. Consider and discuss for possible approval of extending the contingency schedule in conjunction with the mandated Cameron County orders concerning COVID-19.
And again, Mr. Chairman and members, that I wanted to get ahead on this one because the next board meeting is on the 6th. So if the county decides on the, after the 4th, that they want to go back to open businesses or whatnot, at least we have something to go by right now, that we can go back to our normal schedule. But otherwise, we'll vote till the 13th, the next board meeting and and continue the information for the contingency schedule, which is 20 hours of work from each employee and then the other is paid by the district. So if, if in conjunction with mandated court orders means that, that we would probably, let's say the 6th or the 7th before our next meeting is until the 13th. So they decide to open, the business is back and let the people go out and do whatever they need to do and work. We'll go back to our regular schedule. We work the 40 hours thereafter. But if it doesn't, and then everything stays the same, we'll come back on the 13th and advise the board again on what's happening.
It's literally approved.
There was a motion made by Mr. Houston.
Until, do we need to establish a date?
May 4th.
The 13th. The 13th, okay. The 13th, we'll come back.
Honor before.
We're honored before, right?
A second.
And that was a second by Dr. Lallan. Are all those in favor? Aye. They are. Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move along to item eight, Director of Operations Report.
Yeah. This was primarily an FYI notice. We got noticed on the 15th, a week ago today, that one of the customers was really irate because the belief is that the meter is not pounding right. It's not marking, it's not marking correct. And so he called Joel and he was talking to him and he threatened to go to the media. And so Joel called me and I discussed it with Mr. Galván. And he thought that it would be a good idea to notify you ahead of time in case he did go to the media and you would be aware of it. And so what we did is we got some of the readings from his meter for the current, for this current meter that he had and the previous one that he had. So let me go ahead and start, go back nine months. As you all know, we changed all the meters out for all our customers. And his was changed back in July. And back in the last couple of pages of what I submitted, November 22nd, he had the meter where it went for four hours from 2:00 in the morning till 6:00. And it recorded 109 gallons, 214, 126, 112, and one, again, 112 at 6:00 in the morning.
Leaky toilet.
Well, that's what we told him and that's what, what we surmised. But he wasn't buying it. So what we did is on the December the 11th, we went ahead and changed that meter. Before we changed it, we did test the meter and it tested it 100%. Slow and 100% when it was in the high. So we, we changed this new meter on December 11th and now five months later again, five months later again, the meter ran from 6:00 on the 13th, 6:00 in the afternoon, to 8:00 and on the 14th, 8:00 in the morning the next day. And used a total of approximately 1780 gallons, which is quite a bit. That's an average of about 118 gallons an hour. And so he was pretty upset about that. We can understand that if you don't know where it's going. And so we decided to wait and, and talk to him. We did go out there and test the meter. The meter tested again. This is the second meter in there. Tested again at 100% low and 100% on the high side. And that test is attached on there also that you can see. So it's pretty accurate. The meters are marked pretty accurate. So we waited till this week and I went to talk to him yesterday and.
To the customer.
To the customer. And he was already pretty calm. And we told him, what we did is we went around and looked at all the other neighbors around this area. And we checked some of the neighbors on the same line that he's in. But nobody's having that, that issue. And we haven't heard, we've heard customers complain that the meter is not working properly, but not at this extent. But in any case, the only thing we can come up with, he either left his water running outside or he has a bad commode, with a bad flapper that stayed up.
Yeah, the discrepancies in question are quite different. 11700 gallons versus 100. I mean, in the timeframe, those are, so pretty unique discrepancies.
Yeah.
They're not consistent.
Do you realize, well, that's true. A commode, the tank of the commode holds about a gallon and a half. And it'll take about a minute for it to fill up. And 120 gallons in an hour if a commode is wide open, it's conceivable.
Right.
It's, it's very possible. And the other way, it spikes up to over 118 gallons, 123 here once.
But this is not daily. It's not daily or continually. These are sporadic periods of time.
Well, this, this happened on the same, pretty much the same, not the same hour, but within the same timeframe. It happened at 6:00 in the evening and it went straight on till 8:00 the next morning. And so it's really kind of hard to tell what it was unless we knew for a fact that it was the commode or he left the, the water running. But after we talked for a while, he was, he was okay with it. We told him what we'll do is we're going to monitor as much as we can and try and follow up and see if anything happens again. The strange thing about this, that was not so strange, is that it's been in the evening or early in the morning in both cases. And the other coincidence that I, that I noticed on this is that it happened five months. From the time that we initially installed the first meter, five months later, we installed in July. Approximately four, five months later, it happened with the first meter supposedly. And now since November to April, it's another five months. So I don't understand it. We have, we have not received any other complaints from other meters like this. So we find it kind of hard to believe that this one meter would be costing like this. And we did, we know we have smart meters, but it's not that smart to figure out that we're trying to raise more money than them.
I guess, would it be possible to ask to look at his toilets to see if they're leaking or give him some samples?
Color tablets.
Tablets or something?
Well, we did. And he mentioned that as a matter of fact, because he picked up those tablets before. And those tablets will work okay. If you have a very small leak where it's dropping into the commode, you'll see that it is leaking. But if you have a leak like this with a flapper on, it's just going to wash it out.
It'll wash it out real quick, yeah.
Yeah.
You've got two, you've got two events about five months apart.
Better several.
Sounds like to me he's got a neighbor borrowing some water.
Well, we thought about that too.
I mean, really?
Yeah, we went to his house. He has a spigot in the front of the house which faces right, I mean, his yard. And like maybe 20 feet from the street, the front of the house.
It's right on the corner there.
Yeah, but he has the rest of his house. It's surrounded. He's got fenced in. And so it's very hard to get to those spigots without having to jump a fence or go.
One by the street is right there.
Yeah, but that one is right in front of his house and.
But in the middle of the night.
Well, and the one thing that he did say that would, that makes sense is if I'd have had left the water on, I would find a big puddle the next morning, which is true. And he didn't have anything. So the only thing that we can, we can think of was he left the flapper, the flapper in the commode stayed up.
Someone borrowed some water.
And, you know, it's happened.
It's not a daily ongoing basis.
It's happened twice in six months.
So I think we'll just monitor it.
But we told him we will work with him as much as we can. We'll, we'll keep an eye on it and see what happens.
You put in two meters, each meter you've tested, everything's checked out 100%. I think you've gone.
We've done quite a bit.
110%.
Yes. And I recommended to Robert as the first time, just change the meter for now because I know it's going to happen again. And it did. As I know our customers pretty well. And it happened again. So I said, well, it can't be possible that two meters are pretty accurate and then have that type of deal where he's, you know, that are not working properly, but they work. So we didn't change them very much. I just, so anyhow, moving on, I guess, just, yeah.
And testing these meters, we normally have a 25-hour charge. And we went ahead and waived that since we requested that meter. And his total bill actually was $3.94 more than just the regular bill.
Okay. With all the extra water?
Well, he doesn't use a whole lot of water, as you can see on the page, the third page, or, yeah, the third page. I brought it up to the 16th. You can see all those zeros that are on there that where the water is not on. So it's just unfortunate that it happened.
Okay, let's move along then. Thank you, Robert, for your work with that. I know that's challenging. That, that person is challenging. Moving on to item number nine. District Engineers Report Request for Qualifications for Water Plant One Clarifier Replacement, Wastewater Discharge Permit Renewal, Andy Bowie Wastewater Treatment Plant.
All right. So yeah, the first item here is a copy of the RFQ that we've advertised on April 16th to solicit request engineering firms to submit their statement of qualifications. So we can go ahead and prepare that, that plan, plans and specifications to get the clarifier reconstruction out for bid. And so, so we've had four firms express interest. Expect to, you know, begin responses from all of them. And at this point, we have drawn the details on here to meet the full federal procurement requirements. So, so it's, it's prepared in a format to be eligible for reimbursement should we, you know, follow through with a loan through the Texas Water Development Board. So we already have that, that format in place with this RFQ. And I don't know if there's any other comments on it. I mean, the one, one key item I'd want to mention is that we'd like to have a Professional Services Committee meeting on May 5th. So maybe we can set a time or a chance here while we're, while we're on the discussion to be able to get together and review the proposals and, and have a recommendation ready for the, the next May 13th one.
I'm open. Just ask Jason what's good for him.
Jason, are you available on this thing?
Mr. Starkey?
I mean, it is Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo.
But you don't celebrate that, do you?
Can we do it in the morning?
Yeah, I'm clear. Is 9:00 AM good?
9:00 AM works just fine. I'll put it down.
All right, that'll work.
What time?
Yeah, 9:00 AM for May 5th.
Does that work for you, Alex?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, yeah. And since those, the SOQs are due on May 1st, I'll try to deliver them to you in advance the other weekend to go through them. And then we can, we can meet on Monday.
Okay.
May 5th at 9:00 AM. Do you be receiving the copies of the RFQs or what?
Yeah, they're due on 2:00 PM on, on May 1st.
May 1st.
And then I'll distribute that afternoon.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So yeah, this is, unless there's any other questions or anybody wanted to mention anything on the RFQ, we can move on to the next item.
Let's move on.
Right, yeah. So the next one, of course, we, for our wastewater treatment plants, we have our four sewer plants. And all of them, all four permit renewals were submitted. They've been declared administratively complete. So the next step is to get the technical review completed. And so the results are still pending for Laguna Vista and Isoblanca. But we've already received the draft permits for review and approval at Andy Bowie and Port Isabel. And with Port Isabel, I mean, everything's looking good, you know, through the agreement with the Garcias. We've met the buffers on requirements with the completion of construction, you know, that one's.
It's been a long work in progress, Charles.
Yes, exactly. So, so we did get there. But, you know, we did remove the copper and zinc off of the, off of the Port Isabel site by doing the line extension. And lo and behold, with Andy Bowie and its discharge into the Birding Center area, we have gotten a copper restriction put onto that permit renewal. So that's going to require a three-year period to determine how we're going to address that copper limit. That's going to be, you know, put, set as a, as a new discharge limitation at the Andy Bowie Sewer Plant. And I'm, I mean, just, just from.
Is that, Charles, is that an additional cost?
Yes.
For the district? And, and we're having to meet that because?
Just because of the stream analysis? Because essentially what the Birding Center does is they have their, that area burmed off. So essentially our effluents flooding the wetland for the freshwater exhibit at the Birding Center. And since, since that's just basically, you know, impounded water with like a wetland, they're the mixing zone.
How much additional money would?
Oh, it's unknown at this stage. I mean, at this point, we're going to be doing quarterly reports to, to identify, you know, the source and then what we can do to meet that restriction. It's just from the lab work, when we did all the heavy metals tests, copper came out, you know, in a, in an amount, a concentration higher than what we're allowed to be put into that kind of stream.
Into, into those wetlands.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. And we pay for that permit ourselves, right?
Yeah, it's a permit. It's, well, the permit renewal is every five years. So the permit's been in existence since. Uh, yeah, it's a permit. It's, well, the permit renewals every five years. So we, the permit's been in existence since we put the plant in operation.
And how much, how much is a permit?
Oh, that, well, the permit itself, gosh, maybe fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars plus the lab work. I mean, the lab work might be seven thousand, but we do that.
So there's not much additional cost in adding the other level of, 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 I guess, to be able to look at that.
Well, the, yeah, we, we don't know.
Right. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is how much additional monies we're looking at.
It's unknown at this stage. I mean, that, that'll be part of what we develop over that three-year period.
Okay.
It's all come to treat.
But we're having to do it for that specific area.
Right, right. The specs have been
Right.
And the treatment has to be identified.
Right.
Well, we'll be looking at, at that one and uh, maybe in the future, we can uh, recover some of that if we talk to the birding center to, this is costing the district someone, some revenue for, for that part of, of the testing. Maybe you can help us out in some way. I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, that concludes.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate. Let's move along to uh, item ten. Consider and discuss for possible approval. Board amendment to restore lift station department two to, to, to pre-treatment dash lift station department.
So um, this is uh, this is something that we uh, decided together with the, with the operations department uh, to do a reorganization uh, in hiring the, the, the new pre-treatment manager. Uh, rearranging some of the uh, his responsibilities to oversee the, the lift station uh, department. Um, um, which was originally department two before it was consolidated into the wastewater department. But uh, that, that area um, is, is something that we, we think the pre-treatment manager uh, should be responsible for. Maybe Robert can elaborate on that a little bit.
The pre-treatment manager will oversee uh, the restaurants as far as their grease traps and you will be monitoring them and getting with the uh, with the managers, owners of restaurants to make sure that their grease traps are cleaned as, as, as soon as they need to be, uh, so that we don't have the grease going into our uh, sewer lines. What happens is when that grease goes into the sewer line and it hits cold water, it just solidifies and starts blocking the uh, the water lines. It causes, causes a lot of sewer backups and lift stations. Uh, a lot of extra work on the lift stations and the pumps and we have to be constantly maintaining those, those pumps. We have to, as a matter of fact, by two, three within this past year, uh, just this last six months alone. So, uh, we need to try and keep them as clean as possible. He's in the process of uh, setting up a procedure to meet with restaurants. Uh, as it turned out, the, the pandemic has, has really helped them to be organized and be ready so that he can start meeting with the managers uh, on the restaurants as soon as they become open.
Who is this?
This is Francisco Usman. Frankie.
And now Robert was going to bring him in today, but he's going to actually bring him at the next meeting. The new retailer already here. We're going to make him come in at the next board meeting with a presentation that he has on the lift stations and what's going on. So, we'll bring him back soon so he'll be.
I got a, I have a question on that. Um, though, the, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for his training?
For his training?
Yeah. For the pre-treatment position.
OJT, basically.
Okay. Uh, there's no certification required?
No.
He already has his license.
He has.
I know he has his license. Yeah. Uh, but I guess what I'm asking is there's no training or certification needed for his pre-treatment position?
None that I, that I could see. Uh, as you're aware, you and I met with the gentleman from uh, West Laco who handled the, took care of that. And uh, he never mentioned that. We talked to the uh, the vendor that picks up a lot of the grease traps or grease. And uh, that's never been mentioned. But we've seen, we haven't seen anything where it requires any kind of certification.
Okay.
But there is trainings all the time on that part? So we make sure that he goes to some of those trainings?
Yeah, because I do know we have some money budgeted for that.
He can also work with some of the health department, some of the health and code enforcement.
Yeah.
And identify who they, you know, who the people are. But I do ask that as these businesses come back online, let's not kick the back door in with enforcement and threats. And I mean, it is, all needs to be done. And yes, this is a work in progress, but it's also be a little gentle on some of these businesses. Management and operator knows, you know, it's
Basically what, what we've talked, I've already met with him a couple of times and uh, we have talked where he will meet with the uh, with the managers, the city managers from Port Isabel and, and South Fidery and, and the uh, investigators that are looking over the area. So he will meet with them and, and try and get some information from them as to how he can be seen.
Yes, how, how get people compliant and, and check their monthlies or their bimonthlies, whatever they need to do.
And we are working uh, probably using the same letter that Adisa wrote up. And, and as far as he can use in the introduction with the managers and so on with, and, and we give him a copy of our policy as, as far as that's concerned also, uh, so that they're aware of any uh, consequences on violations of
Yes.
Sewer disposals.
Not asking for forgiveness, we'll just kind of tread lightly, these some of these poor businesses or
Well, he is a right man that he'll
I, I agree.
You know, he'll do the right job.
I think it'd be a great time for that.
Professionally done.
The uh, as far as the licensing goes on that department, uh, he's going to be overseeing it. So do we have the right licensing employees left?
He has an A license on, on the wastewater.
And he's going to, oh, he's going to be the oversight manager for that anyway.
Yes.
If I may.
And he is, he had, he had worked with the uh, sewer plants for, for quite a few years, already had the, some uh, fifteen years experience or so. And so he is familiar with what goes into the sewer lot and to the sewer plants. And he, he did work with the sewer lines, uh, I'm sorry, with the uh, lift stations uh, for about six years, five, six years, when they were separated prior to them being combined with the wastewater.
Yeah.
So he had a pretty good, well-rounded experience.
Yeah, yeah. My question is really one of, do we, are we left with the property licensed people where he used to work? At, at the wastewater plant? We do it. Because I noticed we have a B and a C license. Do we need a late A license member there or employee there?
And with uh,
Where Frankie used to be.
Where Frankie used to be?
Yes, sir.
Uh, not necessarily, but first that there is going to be interviews and, and the people that, by my understanding, are looking at, at interviewing for that position do have A license.
Okay.
Cause Frankie's an A license.
Right.
Yes.
If, if I may add one more comment on this, we also need to go, and this has been the ongoing problem, reviewing what the municipalities, the different cities have uh, and get it on their ordinances and, and books that the businesses need to have. That, that's the first step of this, starting from the top with the ordinances to be able to enforce the compliance, because it's not just us. It's what the business and the inspectors and, and is required of, of, of the businesses. So that, that needs to be evaluated also.
We have a template, kind of.
Kind of, and you started, you were working on a project for that a while back.
Well, we, when we went, met with West Laco, we, we kind of got a template of what
Yes.
they're doing. Uh, but, but we can
But without creating more aggravations jumping into this, we also need to review what's on ordinances in the communities and get them to help us to get this enforced and get the businesses in compliance. Otherwise, we're wasting our time and creating more aggravation.
Part of the plan, right. Part of the plan was to, yes, to do that is to have a uh, I guess, an application, an application from us.
Yes.
With each individual city. Yes, that they in turn have to
And to get the businesses into compliance or a timeframe to get them into compliance.
Business or try to do whatever. Yeah, because what happens is that sometimes there's a change of hands in, in the business.
Correct.
And the person coming in knows nothing about it.
Right.
So they
Grandfathered.
Right. So when the city goes in, they will be handed uh, application from us. And once we have that signature, then the city can issue that permit.
And then it'll take a policy, a service policy uh, to, to, to work on this and have a policy in place. And that's where Brian is going to come in and help us put in
Our policy and community's policies.
Yes.
And they all need to, they all should mirror each other so that it's pretty much the same. In other words, it's from each community, they have the same ordinance and we have our policy and it's effective. Otherwise, we're just, we're back to square one.
Right. And it, it'll take teamwork from cities and, and us also. So
That's my comment.
We'll make sure that we work it out the right way.
Yes.
Uh, and this one does uh, need board approval because if there's some uh, uh, funds that we're allocating from the wastewater uh, department to the lift station department.
And the administration department as well.
So move.
Second.
The motion made by Mr. Starkey, seconded by Mr. Avalos. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, let's move along to item eleven. Consider and discuss for possible approval. Encoder Register for Fire Meters Part of the Meter Replacement Program.
Yeah, for this uh, item, we want to ask the board for no action.
Okay. For what? No action.
On this one, because I think there's
It's, they were included in, in the uh, agreement with Mueller.
Yes.
The, the difference is that uh, we're not going to get it from Mueller. We're getting it from Badger because we keep them Badger meters.
So then let's move along to item twelve. Uh, consider and review expenditures from April first, twenty twenty through April fifteenth, twenty twenty. So we'll have a chance to acknowledge them. Questions, comments about anyone in particular?
Acknowledge.
Acknowledged by Mr. Houston, also acknowledged by Mr. Starkey. All those acknowledged.
Acknowledged. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, let's move along to item thirteen. Let's adjourn this meeting. In conclusion, I'd like to wish everyone health and safety and happiness going forward and hope to resume when things are able and possible and capable. And thank you all for your time and dedication being here tonight. Tonight is six, twelve PM.
We'll sit. Thank you.